Call the roll please.
Zalada, Spinks?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Mizak? Janudis?
Here.
Posar?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Counsel, I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Mizak from the meeting. I have such a motion, but Spinks second by Zalada. Call the roll please.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
You'll notice we have a vacancy up here. Frank Ambosi's mother passed away this morning. We wish their family, give them our condolences and our prayers. So certainly he does not have to be here tonight at such a time. Counsel, we have the minutes of the work session of October 2nd, 2017. Any corrections? It's being done, called motion for acceptance. Zalada, second by Janudis. Call the roll.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Yeah, the minutes of the regular meeting of October 2nd, 2017. Any corrections? Being done, motion for acceptance. By Saunders, second by Posar. Call the roll.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And tonight, we're fortunate to have a presentation from Hawthorne Valley Youth Counsel, Deva Laty and Councilwoman Harden from Oakwood. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I wanted to thank you for your past support of the youth council and our partnership that we continue through this day. We have 11 students so far, four from Bedford Heights, four who've shown extreme interest from Bedford, and the remainder are from Oakwood. And we have a really great group of kids. This is the best group we've ever had. They interviewed well. Their accomplishments in high school and junior high are phenomenal, and they're very driven. So we really need to see that. And I have to say something real quick here, that in our first meeting, we said the pledge of allegiance like we always do when we start our meetings, and one of the students after we said the pledge said, "Miss Deb, why are you so stoic when you pledge to the flag?" And I explained to her the importance of the pledge of allegiance and what's behind it, those who serve, those who died for our freedoms. And so they got a sober lecture on how we pledge the flag and why. Those are the kind of things that the youth learn in youth council as well as community service, giving back to their communities, and we are looking for more ways to give back. So we're looking to you to help us do that. Give an ideas what Bedford does that our students can participate in to help give back to their community. So we just want to thank you so much for your support and trustingness with the kids of the community to help raise up future leaders. And you know, I say that future leaders, but really they are today's leaders, even in high school and junior high, they're stepping up. And it just really moves my heart to see how they do step up to the plate. Tonight, we did elections. Matter of fact, we just swore in our president, vice president, secretary, recording secretary, marketing coordinator, the chaplain, and we have all these different positions. And before I left, I told the little president who was just sworn in, "You're going to have to gavel the end of the meeting. You run the rest of the meeting for me, I gotta go." And I know she's doing it with honors. This is Sarah Davidson's third year. She is a Bedford resident, and she does a phenomenal job. She stepped out last year because that was her first year in high school, and she didn't want to compromise her high school grades for anything else. So she wanted to make sure that she was on task for that year, and she said she could do it with these, and she says, "I'm back this year with youth council with everything I have." So she became the president, she was put her in. Also Cameron Jackson, this is his second year in the youth council. Michaela Jones, she's a junior at the Bedford High School. This is her first year, and she's told me, she says, "Why didn't I know about this organization before?" And she just fell in love with it. She is a real spitfireer, I would doubt. And Alexis Miller, this is her second year as well. And these kids, what they don't catch the first year, they catch the second and the third. And by the time they graduate, they truly are leaders. So I want to thank you. Just briefly, I don't know as public officials, but to you, all of you parents, thank you so much for sending your kids. I should pay to do this. Every year, we have the opportunity to look in those faces, and you can spot the youngsters, that they're going places. So our community is being turned over, and it's going to be good hands. Make sure we leave a little something back there for them. But they're doing an awesome job, and you can be very, very proud of your children. They're really awesome. And again, keep sending them. They actually brought their writing legislation. And we're not trying to send them in the direction of politicians. It's an overall objective to just bring them to wherever they want to go. Again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And I can tell you that we did authorize the fourth kid.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And we're on the edge of having a coordinator.
Okay.
Sitting a couple seats over. But she won't be able to make your meetings till the end of the year or so.
Okay.
But you might, I'm sure she has some questions for you.
Absolutely.
We might have that coordinator position filled.
We hope we have answers.
But certainly both be a valuable addition to your team to...
That's great.
Somebody with Maryland's expertise.
Absolutely. Yeah, she has a lot to offer.
Oh, absolutely. And we appreciate you guys stopping by and...
Thank you for having me.
Anytime the kids want to come by and say hi, that's okay too.
We have upped the requirement that they have to be here, and so you will see them more often. You will see them more often, yes. So thank you so much.
If anybody have a question?
Any questions for us?
Got questions, Gregor.
Will we see them for student government day?
Yes.
They would blend right in for that.
Yes.
Great.
Yes, I've already talked to the principal of the high school, Mr. Bonners, and I told him whether they're in student government at high school or not, I want them out of school for that day. I'm not going to take no for an answer. I'll try not to take no for an answer. We hate to see her cry. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hang around? Yeah, for a minute. You can. Ordinance number 9524-17. Our wish to table is for tonight. Want to make sure we have a full council here when we vote on that. So we are going to have a special meeting on October 23rd. Time will be announced. Also the night of our budget hearing, so that's next Monday. So if you want to be here, be here then. But I want to make sure everybody's here as we vote on these two important issues. Yeah, so I need a motion to table 9524-17. By Saunders, second by everybody on this side. Zalada? Call the roll please.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9525-17, same thing. Just to have a motion to table. By Saunders, second by Posar. Call the roll.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to touch on some infrastructure items here as we get into the winter months. As I've mentioned previously, the city did finish our application for OPWC for Union Street, which included the waterline replacement and resurfacing of that roadway. It is a county roadway, and that application is worth about $1.8 million. It will have to go through a process, so we won't hear anything for a couple of months. But what we did do is, the county offers a funding program where they reimburse municipalities for materials if you have to do repairs on county roadways. You have to identify those roadways in advance and put in the application now. So our application would be for 2018, and we are putting four funds in for that as well, and it would include any work that we're forced to do to Solon Road, to West Grace, to Union Street, and Rockside. So we are completing that application as we speak. In regards to another grant that'll be coming up near the end of the year, there's a CDBG grant, which is a county funded program. A lot of municipalities use this for infrastructure. It's about, the grant is capped at $150,000. So typically, we've used it for a wide variety of things outside of that. For instance, entrance signage, we've done some street skate projects. So what we're going to be doing is, the administration has some recommendations and thoughts for council, but we will also be having a public meeting. That date is not set, we'll make sure to get that out there and announce it at a future council meeting. But that meeting is for the public to give us their thoughts. Either, these are some of the options that are going to be in front of council. What are your thoughts on that? We usually don't get that big of a turnout, but it's a good meeting to voice your opinion, what you think is important in that. So look out for that meeting. I will mention lastly, we did, Councilman Saunders, you had brought it up at the last meeting, and we included in council's weekly memo last week correspondence that we sent to the county and ODOT regarding the construction on 271, what it's causing. It's causing deterioration of Solon Road and increased traffic on Broadway. We are looking for them to take a look and inspect those roadways when the project's completed and possibly assist with some repairs or resurfacing. I can tell you, I got a response today, and it wasn't a positive response. They feel that State Route 14 is a state route and already gives enough traffic, and it's not because of their project. Although they did commit to come out to our city and look at those two roads at the end of the 271 project, and that's in 2020. We'll hold them to it. But we are aware of those roadways and obviously looking at some things that we can do. And lastly, I want to mention that we're down to about 500 meters to install. If you have not had your meter installed, or if you have had a card on your door, acknowledging that your readings have been estimates, please call us. We're going to eventually have to shut water off at locations that aren't getting reads. We've done that a couple times already. Obviously, that has only been a result of six months to a year of postings. So please, if you've gotten those notices, contact us, we want to get those meters installed and make sure they're working properly and not just relying on estimates. You could be getting bill higher. So that's all I have, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lauder? Just my request to the Gambosi family and the Indian family. Frank, Frank had some comments, but I tried to bring them in, believe your ordinances. Counsel, Mrs. Zalada?
Thank you. Traffic on Broadway has definitely been a little more excessive than it used to be. It really is. I can hardly get out of my street, and I've had other residents around me that say the same thing. It's been pretty bad. So hopefully, we'll get some help. I know one night when 271, there was an accident down there from a construction company. It's about a week and a half ago or so, I think. It was horrible, you know, when there's something going on on the highway, then everybody comes onto the state routes. Oh my Lord, you couldn't get in or out of anywhere. Everybody was upset. People were calling me right in mud. Okay, not bad. That Little Park, our pride and joy at the corner of Mitchell and Broadway, if it's going to be any kind of, if there's going to be any kind of a dedication, we're going to have nice weather for a while. So I don't really want to go there and build a snowman, so if we're going to get it done, let's get it done.
We actually just, the plaque has been ordered.
Good.
For acknowledging the Tversky's families' donation of that property.
Good.
And I believe the benches are supposed to come in later this week or beginning of next.
Great.
That's all that they're waiting on.
Great.
But I'll get a date, and obviously, we'll send something out in the midst.
Because it's been a big hit, and people are asking me, you know, when it's going to be. I, you know, I didn't know. So people are really happy with it. It really was a big hit. Good for us. Halloween is, oh, you know, the 31st, and we're still trick or treating on the, on Halloween. Okay? Six to eight? Six to eight, okay. Oh, I suppose church is probably going to have a candidates night tomorrow night at Light of Hearts Villa. Candidates of Ward Three only, but anyone's welcome to come. I mean, there's a lot of people running in Ward Three, and people there again have asked me, you know, and I said, "Well, come and hear for yourself," you know, what they're going to do. It's close to home, for heaven's sake, it's right there, the parking is plentiful, and I see several candidates as I'm looking out there. So come and say your piece, and let me get off the hook, you know, trying to tell them who to vote for. I said, "As far as I know, they're all good people. Come and hear what they have to say." So, but everybody's welcome. And I see Jeff out there, you know, "Please come and hear what's going on." I see signs of yours in my ward. I think that's about all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
I think the reason why there's so many people running for Ward Three is because they have such big shoes to fill from this lady right here. I know you all have good shoes to fill. I know when I was deciding to run, she was the first one that I went to because she's kind of been my hero. And have asked a lot of advice from her throughout the years because I knew she knew lots of things, and she really did a, has done a phenomenal job. And I have asked her, I'm so fortunate to be running Unopposed, to ask her to swear me in this time because I couldn't think of a better person to do it. Thank you. You are my hero. Don't cry, don't cry, no counsel. With that being said, talking about trick or treat, the historical museum will be open, and again, once again this year, we will be doing handing out candy, trick or treating will be at the museum this year. So if you don't want to take grandkids out, or kids out in the neighborhoods, come up to the Historical Society, you'll see my face, and we'll be dressed up, not anything scary. Everybody will be dressed up, and that's also from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This last weekend, we started our cemetery tours, our hard tours, and there again this weekend, the 21st and then the 28th, the tours are up to 20 people. You need to call and get registered, it's $10. It starts at 5:30. And I just found out through an email that I'm going to be playing Mary Godwin, the Survivor of the Titanic. At least she wouldn't have known that she was a survivor, she didn't drown. Costume and all that should be very fun, a lot of really fun things going out. Shout out to Jeff Asbury in our fire department. This was a program last week through the strategic planning, which has really turned out. At first, I, you know, I wasn't real crazy about it, I didn't know what it was all about. But then it's turned out, it turned out to be a really good thing for our city. A lot of good programs have come out of that strategic planning. Rich, I think, has done a few things that has promoted our city. The program has done well, and I tell you what, I went, and there was probably about 25 people that were there, the mayor went, my husband went. There was a lot of things in our fire department that our guys have, and I didn't know we had these things, and I was like, was just, it was really amazing. And there was even a couple of residents there at Light of Heart that came in and asked the questions, and I just started, Boches were there, and there's what, standing with about 15 of our guys there, no, 15 or 20 of our guys there. And it was just, it was really informative. It was really nice, it's really important because, you know, we just like, we see them, we get them, they get on fire, they go rescue people, and they do this stuff. But there's so much more that goes into it, and they talked about their daily activities, what they did, working out how important it was. And it just, you know, those guys are already phenomenal in my book. But it just showed another light on how phenomenal our city is with our safety department. Right now, though, switching the thing, volunteers. We need volunteers for meals on wheels. You know, this is a very important thing, Diane out there, Diane out there and her husband, and today, we had seven people that were out. Because we're all volunteers, we've got things going on, so I did a couple extra routes today. But if you have just an hour out of your week, it's Monday through Friday, it's the most rewarding thing that you can possibly do, besides mentoring in the schools, which I do that too. But if you have an hour, please, you can drive or you can get out and deliver meals. This is so important. I know we have about 54 people now that are waiting on the list to get these meals. And they're going into these homes, sometimes this is the only bills those people get that day. So it's very, very important to do that. Also Thursday, the Chamber of Commerce, there's going to be a regional Chamber of Commerce Business Expo. It's open to the public, it starts at 4:00. It is Independence at the Rockside Holiday Inn. Lot of really neat stuff going on there. Again, it's open to the public, and please stop by, I'll be there from 4:00 to 7:00. This is Thursday. It says coming Thursday, that is October the 19th, and don't forget about the ghost tours, the cemetery tours this weekend and next weekend. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janudis?
Thank you. I don't want to make Maryland cry, so...
It's not my last meeting, I don't think.
I do want to acknowledge the Hawthorne Valley Youth Council and the good work they do, and if you're not familiar with them, they serve the community and kids in the high school, and various communities in our school district, and really lead them to leadership roles in society, and they really do good work. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Posar?
Good evening, thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to send my condolences to Frank Gambosi. He was here for our work sessions tonight, had a very rough time, and those of us that have gone through that recently know, you gotta keep busy, and he does no matter what. So he was here tonight and kind of pushed him out the door to get home. I touched, my airplane touched down at 6:00 tonight, and it's quarter to 7:00, my bag was still someplace. We ran to get here, and after this, I'll go back. So please, let's keep our comments to a minimum so we can go before they close the airport. My kudos to Frank, rather to Mike and the city for what they did on Oakwood and Forest, piggybacked on the Carroll Drive landscape phenomena. We got some of the scraps over there, and it's terrific, it looks really good. I would like to have in a short form, the paperwork or the instructions as to how the city will assist the resident in acquiring that land bank property on both sides of the property. If most of you know that when there's a parcel of land bank, we can make it available for a very inexpensive price to neighbors on both sides, and they can expand the property. In this case, it would be welcome, and we'd appreciate it if you could send that over.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes. First, I want to thank Mike for getting the gas company to fix that section of Union right before the bridge. It's a shame the rest of the road don't look like that, but it's really nice to at least have about 50, 60 feet of nice smooth pavement, courtesy of our gas bills, I guess. Once again, I hope they do the same type of thing on East Washington, especially where they cut around the bridge for the railroad, because that is what, that is probably the best concrete street we had in the city, and they just cut a trench through it. Speaking of Washington, I also want to thank you for getting the gas company to at least cushion some of the plates that are on the side streets. They used some coal mix to keep those plates from bouncing as bad as they were. They're still a little noisy, but nowhere near what they were. So that has helped a little bit. The residents in that area, at 3:00 in the morning, are tired of getting jarred awake with kaboom kaboom as people were hitting plates, so that's good. And then the other thing is, I'm hoping our crews are keeping an eye on Tarbell, because Tarbell is listed by the State of Ohio Historical Society as one of the oldest brick streets in the state of Ohio. And the gas company has been running heavy equipment up and down that street, not to mention the fact digging under it and whatnot. So if they do damage it, I hope that they will restore it, but they've been running their VAC trucks and everything up to Adams and around the corner and things like that. So that street, the base under those bricks is a little old and deteriorated, so the bricks are a little wavy to begin with. Most of the residents like that because it actually acts as a slowdown in traffic through there. But they are running some pretty heavy equipment down on our residential space, so hopefully, they're keeping an eye on those. So outside of that, they mentioned Halloween. Of course, anybody that's been by my house on Halloween knows that I got the spooky in, so we'll be the same thing again this year too, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Also a reminder, 28th, the Saturday, is the trick or treat for the kids down at Ellenwood. Got little ones, bring them on down. It's always a lot of fun. I had the pleasure of going up to Woodside Village to give a little talk to the residents there, and it's pretty interesting, they're all elderly, you know, like my age, and I... Anyhow, but it was really nice to see how engaged they were. They weren't just sitting around, you know, half asleep, they were actually engaged. The amazing thing was the, one person was asking the most questions and the most vocal, gentleman, Mr. Moon, the age of 103. It's pretty amazing. I told him, "I gotta come back, just have coffee with him, because he's got some stories." That was terrific. And again, thanks to Jeff for coordinating that meeting with the fire department. I couldn't believe how much stuff they're doing nowadays since I retired from there. Wow. The quality of work they do is just amazing. They even had this one little gizmo, it's a little drill-like, they drill right into the bone, put IVs right through your bone. Amazing, it's faster to try to stick them in your arm. They only do that when you're in really bad shape. You're not doing it all your way. But they were the first ones that the state was allowed to do that. And now they're only one of two in the whole county that can do that procedure. That says a whole lot for the crew right there and for the respect that the hospital has for our guys and the work that they do, so I'm always proud of them, but just seeing this extra stuff they do is quite amazing, and the SWAT medic, and... I'm trying to get them to, they suggested we do a professional video of that presentation so we can put it on our website, because it's quite impressive. And I would think we could do one for the police too, because they do stuff that we don't, day to day, you don't really see. You see the ambulance go down the street, pick somebody up, but what goes into it, and the quality and training that these guys go through is amazing. Also 38 Gould. Also, 38 Gould, we condemn that, are they doing work there? So, they're gonna try to revive that?
Right.
Congressman down there in Columbus wants to allow people to carry guns in government buildings.
Yeah, in schools.
In schools, you imagine. So, I would encourage you to talk to your congressman down there and say, "That's not a good idea, not a good idea." All right, let's get on our first ordinance, number 9529-17. We're gonna need an amendment. Do that first or do you wanna read it first?
I'll amend it first.
Okay. I need an amendment to add on there to the bottom of the page where it says, "Wherefore this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest date." We needed to read, "Be enforced on January 1st, 2018." So, I need a motion to amend that statement. All right, Zalata, second by Janutus, call the roll.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And this is when Frank also suggests we only do this on first reading to get it, just to get it out there. It's a...
Sure. An ordinance amending ordinance number 848509, which enacted Chapter 1901.03 of our ordinances entitled Unrecorded Special Assessment Verification Fee in Declaring an Emergency, as amended.
And this, this would increase a fee from $10 to $40 for our people in the finance department to do records checks as far as selling your houses go. This is something the title companies already charged you for, so you might as well get it done. Their other option is they can go down to the county and do it. Problem is, the county's records aren't near as good as ours, so. It's really an asset to be able to come here and have our finance people look over anything you might have on the titles and fees and stuff, so.
I just wanna make sure they pay it what they owe before they leave.
Right, exactly. Need a motion for first reading by Saunders, second by Posar. Call the roll, please.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9530-17.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year contract with Julian and Grub, I believe is how you say it, Inc., certified public accountants for the performance of the 2017 through 2021 City of Bedford audits and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Janutus, second by Spinks, call the roll.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Posar, second by Saunders. Frank, if you want to take this word, Tom, but Tom.
Well, it's fine. This is our, city enters into a five-year contract and we work with the state auditor's office that goes out and obviously bids this service out to do a comprehensive audit of the city. Typically, our costs the last five years were about $36,000. Julian and Grub came in, their fees over the course of the next five years, which will go through December 31st of 2021. The services will be for $26,000 per year. And that's to perform the audit, our yearly audit for the state of Ohio.
Thank you. Questions, call the roll, please.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9531-17.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the auditor of the state of Ohio for specific local government services not included in the audit for the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Got a motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Zalata, call the roll.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Posar, second by Saunders.
This is, kind of goes hand-in-hand with the ordinance before that. The city contracts with the state auditor's office for, as the ordinance reads, local government services. And what happens is during those audit process, we have someone from the state auditor's office that's here. And they work hand-in-hand with Frank's, Frank and his staff for assistance with the CAFR, the yearly financial reporting that gets put together and submitted. Obviously, as many of you have heard over the years, Frank has pretty much written that process as far as CAFR reporting. One of the things that's important in this ordinance is the number is not to exceed $19,500 for the year. Typically, it costs, I believe last year it cost us just over $9,000 for these services. However, we are, there was one individual, the Assistant Finance Director, that worked hand-in-hand with Frank to put this information together with this representative from the state auditor's office. That individual took another position and is now working in a city outside of Columbus. So, it's Frank and Frank alone. And he's gonna have to rely a little bit more on this individual until we get a replacement and bring that individual up to speed with how we do things. So, hopefully it's less, but we do have a not-to-exceed clause in that contract.
Thank you, call the roll.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9532-17.
To do, an ordinance enacting Chapter 750 of the fortified ordinances of the city, adopting Part 7 entitled Business Regulation Code, Chapter 750, entitled a Medical Marijuana Business Regulation to create a comprehensive licensing system for medical marijuana entities in the city of Bedford. Also, it amends and supplements Part 19 of our Planning and Zoning Code, Title 5 entitled Zoning Administration, Chapter 1915. The definition, Section 1915.361 is added to define medical marijuana dispensary. And Title 9, general and specific provisions enacted, enacting Chapter 1965 entitled Medical Marijuana Dispensaries with Section 1965.01, creating zoning regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries so as to create a comprehensive zoning system for medical marijuana entities and declaring an emergency.
Sorry, wish put this on first reading, but Mike, do you want to just give a little history on this one?
The city was approached a little over a year ago by a couple of entities that have inquired about putting in a cultivation operation within the city. We met with one, they've actually toured a couple of different sites. Unfortunately, for many reasons, they did not choose Bedford. That was merely to cultivate the pharmaceutical use of medical marijuana. What is happening now is there's licenses from the state of Ohio for that. In addition to that is individuals or entities, I mean, for the most part, we're dealing with entities, that there's gonna be 60 licenses for dispensaries, which are basically pharmacies, that are gonna be offered throughout the state of Ohio. I believe there's five that are gonna be allowed within Cuyahoga County. If you look at this ordinance where this proposal is something that if we would allow them to come here, how will it be governed, where will they allow to locate, in what parts of town? And what type of fee structure there is. Right now, the fee structure for this use is an initial $25,000 first-time application fee. And every year after that, there'll be a $15,000 renewal fee on top of potential income tax that'll be generated from payrolls that could be somewhere around $300,000 to $400,000. It's not a huge operation, but this is something that we need to take very seriously if we are gonna go down this road. It's not, you know, my position to judge what's moral or immoral and there's many different views on this. What we wanted to do, and I think someone, I'm not sure who said it in the back, is let's get ahead of this. Right now, we don't have a moratorium because we wanna be open-minded and we never like to slam the door on any potential business. But at the same time, we don't wanna be, you know, caught in the rear and have one pop up here, here, and here, which won't happen because again, there's only five in Cuyahoga County. But we would like to at least be prepared. Maybe we don't allow them in this historic district. Maybe the fees are $30,000. So, let's set these now if we're gonna go down this road instead of wishing we did when they're already here.
Call the roll, please. Need a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Need a first, put this on first reading, need a motion, Janutus, and second by Spinks, call the roll.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Posar?
No.
Saunders?
Yes.
Now, it's time for hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comments. Seeing none, call none. Lighten it up a little bit here.
I'll make the announcement. Patricia Caraballo, it's 432 Union Street, and again, thanks to Marilyn. We are gonna have tomorrow, Light of Hearts Villa at 7:00. And it'll be the candidates in for Ward Three. And four of the five are here, if you wanna stand up again, I acknowledge Otto, Victor, Laura, and the camera. And I believe Frank Spiker is working tonight, and then myself. So, we'll be there. And we do have a moderator, as far as I know. The person will be coming from Tri-C, so we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, the Green Future 15, Charles Street. Question to Marilyn, because you told me it was the 24th for the candidates, so what's on the 24th?
I'm sorry, I didn't make set up. There is one on the 24th, but it's a private one for one person. Tomorrow night is one for all five. I'm sorry, I did, I did make mistake.
Okay.
But tomorrow night is for all five.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see a big crowd here again. It's a good thing. We had more people. You gotta see how you're dressed. Okay. I'm giving everybody ample time.
Again, it's the Green Future 15, Charles Street. I just noticed yesterday that the fire hydrant on Northfield and right before Charles is, I don't know if someone hit it, but it's completely laying down on the ground.
It's gone.
It's gone?
They took it.
They took it?
In the cap it.
Okay.
Because it's always getting knocked on.
Okay.
No problem.
Anyone else? A motion for a German, by Spinks, second by Janutus, call the roll.
Zalata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Posar?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
A reminder, council, we need to go for executive session after the meeting. Thank you all for coming.